What I would like to do is just tell you from my perspective, this has probably been the most challenging year that I think our club has experienced since 1915. Yeah, 1915, yeah, Boston Club. 2015.
1915.
2015. For the obvious reason of COVID situation. Major capital project going on right now, which you'll hear a little bit later about, that is obviously well underway. Those challenges have affected our planning financially. You'll hear a little bit more about that later. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Markford first. He's going to give you an update on the capital improvement plan as it relates to the golf course.
Okay, I'm going to go over the major things that we did on the course. One of the big things we did obviously was to renovate all the bunkers on the course. For those people that don't know, we have 74 bunkers on the quarry course. Part of that renovation was to put capillary concrete on the bottom of every bunker. That's a porous concrete and will help with the drainage as we get the rains in the summer. In addition to renovating the bunkers, we modified all the holes you see here. There are like 13 bunkers. 13 holes were modified bunkers. The modifications were either some bunkers we made smaller, some brought to their original size. One of the major things we did, and I think you'll notice when you look at the course, is that we took out all the high grass around the back of the bunker. It makes them more playable and aesthetically it's just much better as you look at those bunkers from the key box. In addition, we eliminated three bunkers. One bunker on 10 and two on 11. I think you know the one on 11, which is the large bunker that was on the left of the green. That's gone. In addition, we did rock wall repairs on a number of holes that where the dirt was caving in around the rock walls. We put new rock walls on hole number 10, nearly halfway out. 12 green, 17 green, and 18 green. You may not see the one on 12 since it's underwater. However, we will remedy that next year. And also as the water goes down, that'll come into play. Right now, there's an alligator that really likes that wall. So we're not doing anything with it, but we'll look at that. We regrassed the right side of hole number one with pass palin. Again, that makes it much more playable and also speeds up play since you don't have to look for your ball and heavy grass. We added six ports tees on holes 3, 4, 7, 10, 12, and 14. We reshaped the greens around the greens on both 6 and 10. Major change there. We brought down some of the high points on both 6 and 10. The major landscaping projects, holes 1, 5, and 6 need on the chipping and practice areas. One of the major areas that we did at was hole number 5 to the right of the green as you approach the green. We always had problems there growing grass because of drainage, lack of wind, and lack of sun. So if you've seen it out there, we put a lot of plantings out on the right of number 5 green. The north practice area, we changed the chipping green area, we moved the bunkers, and we increased the size of the practice tee, smoothie. That tee is now one and a half acres. So that'll be helpful during season. We'll have plenty of room to move things around so it's not all beaten up. On the south practice area, we developed a new short game area. I don't know if you've been back there, but if you haven't, go take a look at it. It's probably one of the best in Vegas. We repaired all the broken cart paths to protect the golf carts. We actually laid up 47,000 feet of concrete. In addition, there was a significant amount of work that was done by Rodney and his crew while we were closed. They did a lot of aeration, verticutting. And one of the major things they did, which you can't see, is that they... There were a lot of roots that were coming up under the cart paths. And as a result, especially on 10, 11, the grass wouldn't grow next to the cart paths. It's sucking the nutrients out of the earth and therefore it couldn't grow. So what Rodney's crew did, they went in there and dug trenches all along those cart paths, put in root barriers to prevent that from happening in the future. As I watched, I was here during the summer, as I watched this project unfold, I watched Rodney, Bob Radens make field changes weekly to deal with a number of the issues that came up. In addition, we got a number of input from memberships about what we should do out there. And we actually took those recommendations and implemented a number of those. A big example is that, is that initial message where we took the high grass out from around the bunkers in the back. That came from a recommendation from one of the members. One of the big features is we actually completed the golf course practice area on time and on budget. We closed on May 26th. We said we were going to open on Labor Day. We reopened on Labor Day. Honestly, if you look at what we did, a lot of courses would have closed for six months, but we closed for four. And a lot of this couldn't have gotten done without a lot of people's input, a lot of people's help. We want to thank the Golf Course Master Plan Committee that worked on this project, the 2019-2020 Greens Committee, the 2021 Greens Committee, and special thanks to Rodney Vice Wismann and his entire crew. Again, I was here during the summer, honestly. Rodney was here seven days a week, every week. It wasn't a day I didn't see him on the golf course. And he really put the time in. And also, I want to thank Bob Radens, who also was here probably seven days a week, working with Rodney. I wish you would have been out there. It was kind of entertaining sometimes to watch Rodney and Bob work together and watch the interaction. But at the end of the day, I think we came up with a really good product. There's a lot of improvements on the golf course, and I hope you all are happy with it. That's it for me.
This is the clubhouse facilities update.
Clubhouse improvements, including the golf cart building, already is coming out of the ground right now. It's been a long time coming. I think I've been working on that project since like 2016, but it's out of the ground now. One thing I want everybody, do not try to build a project on COVID. Get in concrete rock like getting turtle paper that's outbreaking COVID. We had a beg and borrow and steal to get all the concrete, but I mean... But the past few weeks have been challenging with the weather, contractor's schedule, and obtaining supplies. Despite that, the challenges were out of the ground. With the first floor is poured, we got half of the second, the main floor up today, blocked. It'll be finished tomorrow. It would have been done today, but my partner told him he only got one arm, so he doesn't help him too much. But we plan on having that pro shop dried in first week of December at the latest. And then we'll start with mechanical, electrical, plumbing inside, drywall, electrical. And it'll move really soon, quickly after that. I did have some elevations that I had on the screen there showing the new elevation of the pro shop and what it looks like attached to the existing building. This plan looks exactly like it was part of the building from day one. It doesn't look like an addition where it's too big or too small. It flows, the roof line is perfect with it. And every side, the elevation looks like it was there from the beginning. And there was a great, I'll even hold it up. It was a great slide of the color rendition of what the pro shop was going to look like from the front door. And if you notice, the pro shop is scheduled for third week in February completion. And it's all decorated for St. Patrick's Day with all green outfits and green shirts. While we were shut down this summer, we pulled forward a lot of work that we could do while the place was closed. So we started with the lobby tile. We took all the tile out of the lobby. We replaced the front door. We took all the tile off the front walkway, all the tile off the event terrace and the dining terrace. Replaced all that. We removed all the railings and had them painted a lighter color. We painted the ceiling in the event terrace. And then we put this great new front door on that looks great, I think. I got rid of that old wooden ski lodge door. It just shows a grand entrance into a grand clubhouse and a grand lobby. And the tile work came out great. We have all the lighting on order for the event terrace. It's been ordered, it should be here within a couple, I think, three weeks now. Also, we took the tile up on the event terrace. There was no water membrane under it. So water was infiltrating down through the ground into the concrete, eaten away by the stucco on the back wall of the clubhouse. So we were able to fix that when we had the tile off, put a lot of membrane on, and slope the floors so the drains came into play. So it works good now. And let's see, I did have some nice pictures, but it's all right. We'll send Willie a mail out to you. And the other last part I was going to take of is the demo. If you look in the lobby right now over where the doors to the multi-purpose room were and the doors to the hallway going down to the locker room, that's all that's there. Everything in between is gone. It's all demoed, it's all just bare down. We put some new structure in the roof to support for the new equipment that's going on the roof on that side. And as soon as the pro shop is dried in, the contractors will be working both projects side by side, running electrical, drywall, and plumbing, and getting it done. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to my good friend and my little guy that came from east of Boston by about 3,000 miles. Mr. Tony Donovan.
But just on phase three, phase three is going to be here. We work due to start out to July of next year. But thank you to the design teams and to the facilities committee who actually done the work ahead. We're actually going to put all the plans into the county in December. That way we can avoid any changes for next year, which will be fast food tours. So those designs are about 90% done. We did have some photos, but they're always not going to come along. Let me go back to what I said about the few phases we've got here, just to remind everyone. Phase one was to build the golf shop. And Chris has talked about where we are on that. That will be finished the third week. I thought the fourth week, but obviously for St. Patrick's Day, it's going to be on the third week. That's important because then that allows us to move straight to then over into the big pro shop where it is now. And then phase two, which is the glue room, which obviously is the kitchen for the glue room. The admin offices are locker rooms and the multipurpose rooms will be working at a pace. And they're due to be finished around early to mid-June. So we'll move into the big room room. The locker rooms will be done before that. And then we can start and work on this place. You noticed we went into three phases because we always wanted to have dining and drinking. That's why we chose not to close the clubhouse down completely, but to move the pro shop, phase one, primarily make a new glue room. Some of you may have seen the wenderings outside. I hope to show you a little bit more on the presentation, but you'll get that. Because the glue room is going to be spectacular. Somewhere where we do want to come in after a hard 19 holes into the 19th hole. And also to come, there's various booths, there's a huge bar inside and outside. And that's due to be finished mid-June. So that's what we're all looking forward to, getting that done and in in mid-June. And then we move on to phase three in here. Couple of things to point out. We've engaged with an acoustic engineering company who are doing some baseline studies over the course of the next few months. And they've also been working with the designers and with the team to analyze the design. One of the things we know we need to improve in here, apart from maybe our IT infrastructure, is acoustics. And we do have an audiovisual company that we are working with on the design as well to improve that. With that said, every second Friday, we meet with all the design teams. We meet with all the contractors and we go through the project timeline, both in detail and also the financial spend. And we're pleased to be able to show that the completion of the project will be start for the 21-22 season, which was always our goal. And although we've got some delays in the pro shop, we're actually making up for them through phase two. And phase three will be on time. All that work will be done inside. Most importantly, the latest estimates, which we'd already done last Friday, show us being almost slightly under the budgeted number. So as a group, it's very important for us to deliver everything that the membership voted on, but also to deliver it in budget. Each of the three phases has its own budget breakdown and we're there. And we have most of the costs in our head yet. With that, we'll pass it back.
As I was saying, I'm glad these came up because you wouldn't believe the thing I said about numbers. But if you told me eight months ago that I'd be up here discussing potential $300,000 shortfall on catch for the year, I think I would have had the flu tonight. Couldn't have prepared to talk about it. But at this stage of the game, it's extremely good news. As you can see, we outlined what we stand right now and how hard COVID hit us for the first three months. You know, we're showing 218, but we're kind of thinking 300,000 as a cash shortfall for the rest, you know, for the entire year. Which is, you know, it's hard to believe, but we all feel it's very good. And talking to other clubs in the area, they're in much worse position than we are. And as everybody probably knows, we're completely transparent on all financial statements. Every quarter, the third quarter financial statement will up, be on the website next week. It'll be 10 pages. Anybody's free to read it. Ask me, Bob Ahmed, Jim Keenan questions if you have any questions about it. You know, it's not to skip ahead, but you know, as everybody probably remembers, we did a 10-year pro forma and how we're going to pay you off our $1 million debt over the next 10 years. And we are significantly ahead of our projections that we put out in February, which is really a testament to how good this club is. I can't believe any other club has grown in equity members as we have in the past seven months. I think that's just attributed to the way the club is run, the way the golf course came out, and everybody, all the new equity members are excited about the clubhouse improvements. I mean, even Mike Miguel, I heard sold a membership last night. Do you want to go to the next one? I mean, part of, you know, I'll summarize and I'll tell you how much down we are. We are significantly down as golf in rounds of golf for outside members, guests, reciprocals. But if you look at the tally up here, we're ahead in trail and cart plan members playing golf. Probably because a lot of us are stuck here. Although, and that's considering we were closed obviously for three and a half months. You know, hopefully that will pick up. Our reciprocals obviously are over. We'll probably still have an issue with guests playing for the next two months. That's why we're projecting a little bigger loss than was on the first screen and just estimating 300,000 for the entire year. And I think everybody has to recognize that we're in the hospitality business here. Nobody on staff can work remotely. All summer, everybody was here. We did a lot of work obviously with employee assistants. Finally, what does, what does the next slide? We've paid $42,000 to employees in need during the pandemic, thanks to the generosity of our members, you know, and building up that fund. And like I said, despite these challenges, which a lot of people kind of doubted our assumptions, go nowhere the next 10 years as far as member growth. I think another speaker will talk about the membership growth. But we are significantly ahead of what we projected. And a lot of people were saying, well, what happens if we have a doomsday scenario? Well, we pretty much experienced part of that already. And we are ahead of where we were projected, which I once again will say is just a testament to what kind of club we have. I did mention that every quarterly financial statement is posted on the website. I hope everybody gets a chance, if they haven't saw me it, to go through it and look. And you know, I think in summary, we've done remarkably well. I mean, management staff has really cut down expenses over this time to help circumvent our revenue losses. I mean, we worked out, as you can see by the first slide, our revenue was down close to 400,000 over the three months when COVID started. So we've made a turnaround on that. We hope to continue, you know, with working on the budget for next year. Obviously, we have a lot of hypotheticals out there, but we feel comfortable that we're in solid financial shape. Thank you.
Was the club able to go for a PPE at all?
We weren't eligible for most of that because it was social club.
I understand it, but the clubhouse was open.
Yeah, we're, our club is a 501(c)(7), so we're not eligible.
Okay, okay, Kevin. I think it's kind of led to, we've had really good fortune throughout this year to date in membership sales, equity membership sales. And in no small part, I think we owe a lot to Jim Magnuson. Done a tremendous job. In marketing our club in a very effective way. He's connected to the real estate community, visits regularly with the key real estate people, got a great list of prime candidates that he's been working on all year. And as you can see, our current membership count, equity members, is at 355. That's our cap. First time we've ever been at 355 since we've owned the club. Much of that has to do with the conversion of non-equity memberships, specifically annual membership, club memberships. We converted approximately 40%, 40-plus percent of the annual memberships that we had at the beginning of the year to equity memberships. We're currently selling these memberships for $47,500. Last year, we were selling them, I think, for what, 30 grand or something like that? 40 grand? And by the end of this year, we'll be selling them for $50,000. Now, that money that we get in the front-end equity contribution or the initiation fees, currently 47.5, is basically capital that is reserved and we planned for when we developed our clubhouse improvement plan to help defray the cost of the $8 million that we borrowed. We're well ahead of that plan. I think as you see in the, where there's a slide here. There you go, capital project pro forma at the bottom. Our plan was to basically get to 345 members by the end of this year. We're already at 355. The amount of money that we're selling these memberships for currently is ahead of where we figured it would be at this point in time of the year. So I guess, just to make this short and sweet, the takeaways for this is that we've done very well against plan in terms of membership sales. Continue to do very well against that. What that has done is already immediately cut the members on the resigned membership list. Prior to reaching the cap, every new member that came in, or no, every member that was on the resigned list, it took three new members for the next person up on the resigned list to be able to get their $16,000 back from the club. As soon as we hit the 355 cap, that goes to one to one. And the upshot of that is going to be the resigned list is going to drop three times faster than what it historically has. That's good for the club, it's good for the resigning members, and it helped build up our capital reserves much quicker than what we've experienced in the past. So kudos to Jim and Bob and all of our members who referred new members to the club. And we've had a substantial number of those. So thank you so much, and I'm going to look very much on that. So next person up is going to be Bob and Jim Magnuson going over the Members First website. For Bob?
All right. As many of you know, we transitioned our website that we inherited from Hampton Golf and Polty back in 2015. We've transitioned to a new platform. And we had several issues at the time. Many of you know and understand the challenges we faced. Our website was not robust. Our members had difficulty navigating the website. It was very difficult for Alyssa and the club management staff to push out communications. We didn't have video capability. We didn't have online reservations. There was no integration with the accounting system. So in the spring, summer of last year, the committees and the board, Matt, we ended up engaging members first to enhance our website. And so there has been some challenges, as many of you have experienced. We are working on the challenges that we are facing, primarily with the tee time system. As we had when we transitioned and implemented the four tee system, we had issues for several months when we made that transition. We're working through the challenges that we face with the Members First system as well. So we've had discussions with the executive team at Members First. We've had conversations with the president of the company, the sales team, and some of the engineers, programmers. So it's a very, very high priority for Jim, for Pat, for me, to get those bugs worked out. And we're confident that Members First can do that. They're an industry leader in club websites. They have the software implemented in 165 other clubs across the country, very similar to ours. And you know, those clubs are not having the issues we are. So we're trying to get to the bottom of this. And if we can, we'll transition back. That's the least desirable outcome at this point. But if we can't resolve the issues we're faced with... we're faced with, then that's always an option. And I think that covered the Members First. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, I think just a little bit about the public side of the website. Prior to us going with Members First, our old website was creating, believe it or not, one lead a month. We weren't getting any traffic because nobody could find us. If you Googled private golf, we would not show up on any page. So by going with the new website and using some SEO, which is search engine optimization programs, and really knowing that it's going to take 30 to 60 days to get it implemented, we now are creating somewhere around 40 leads per month. These get populated in my CRM program, and I get a whole profile on the prospects now. I know which school they went to, so if I know if they went to Michigan, I forward them to Michigan grads here. But it has produced, and now instead of having maybe, we get 40,000 page views per month, and I can see where they're navigating on. We're getting somewhere around 4,000 to 5,000 viewers coming, not viewers, but people are looking at pages. So it's doing its job from a public site, and I'm happy to now, when you Google private golf in Naples, that's, the query pops up on the first page.
Perfect. Perfect. Moving on to COVID-19 protocols. As you know, we've sent out quite a bit of communication regarding the pandemic. We're trying to keep members informed about any of the member cases that we've had, any of the staff cases that we've had in high-profile positions. And we're happy to report that we've only had six member cases since the start of the pandemic, which is less than 1% of our 439 total membership number. So we're happy, we, obviously, one is too many, but I think the reality of the pandemic is we're always going to have some cases in the community, and we need to operate as safe as we can and do our best to keep those numbers down. If somebody in the community or a member in the community, whether they're a resident or a non-resident, if you test positive, we encourage those members to let me know as soon as possible, so I can communicate with Cheryl Olilla in the QCA, and we can do collective contact tracing to make sure we keep members and staff as safe as we can. We can quarantine those that have been in close contact. And if you have had a close contact with somebody in the community or in the club, we request that you quarantine for 14 days, okay? So we clearly don't have enough staff to go out and police this, but we ask that all the members do their part in protecting their fellow members and club staff throughout the community. With regard to club-specific protocols, we do have our face covering policy in place. As you know, we implemented our face covering policy on July 17th. That policy remains in effect, and obviously, the Collier County has extended that mandate through April 13th of 2021. Regarding cart, golf cart policy, probably the most controversial topic in the club regarding COVID-19. Many of the clubs in our area and many of the clubs across the country are moving toward a two golfer per golf cart policy. Some clubs in the area never change, some clubs around the country never change, have always been two members per golf cart. We implemented a single rider policy that requires members to stay on the golf cart path if they're a single golf cart rider. And if somebody needs to ride off the golf cart path, they have the option of submitting for a medical blue flag, whether their fear is, you know, be in close proximity to somebody, or they have a medical, a serious medical issue that requires the blue flag and the need to park near one of the blue stakes. But the reason that the board implemented the single cart rider policy is we simply don't have enough golf carts for the height of season. The club, with all the work that has been done over the summer to improve the conditions on the golf course and the type of agronomic and cultural practices that were done, has really softened up the turf grass and the soil profile so much that we're really susceptible to golf cart traffic damage. So the second reason was, let's protect the asset. And the third was just safety in general. We do 40,000 rounds a year, and if we double the golf cart traffic, we're potentially going to run 8,000 cart rounds with a construction site, limited space already. Safety is a concern as well. So as we get into the busier months, the board felt it was time to transition back to a two golfer per cart policy. We have also purchased golf cart dividers for those that don't feel safe riding together. So we encourage members who would like to get a divider to make that request to the golf shop, and we'll accommodate your request. And also, we have golf cart dividers that we install in private carts at our cost. So we're happy to do that for any member. And those dividers can be taken out, removed, or rolled up, so they're pretty easy to use and take out, should you like to play without one. Upcoming member golf events, the club has invested in a variety of banquet equipment. So we have some new tables, new banquet chairs, street lamps, so we can do more events outside. So we're encouraging members to come to the club to participate. If you don't feel comfortable inside the dining room, we encourage you to sit out on the patio on the event terrace. And some of the events, like the upcoming member welcome back event, will be inside and out. We're going to take the band out of the dining room so we can social distance the tables better. Members will be able to sit inside, sit outside, and then we're going to migrate down to the cart staging area where the band will be on the landing going up to the golf shop, and we'll have a nice event that evening, provided the weather is good. It looks like tropical storm Ada has pulled all the moisture out of South Florida, so that's a good thing. In summary, for the health and safety of our members, residents, and club staff, we request that our members err on the side of caution. If you don't feel well, don't come to the club. It's surprising how many don't feel well and still come to the club, so please refrain from doing so. And we all must take personal responsibility for our actions. Most importantly, we're requesting that all members, all staff, treat those with differing opinions with respect and dignity. It's a very emotional time, it's a very trying time for management. We all have to be here, we're in the hospitality business, we can't work from home, we have to be here. We want to operate as safe as we can, and I know the members want us to operate as safe as we can. There's a lot of ways to get to that end result, and some of those ways are being discussed in member forums and staff forums, and we just ask that everybody be nice and respectful of each other's opinions. But we do look to brighter days ahead, and at this time, I'll turn it back over to Mike Chaplow for some closing remarks, and then we'll get into the Q and A.
Okay. Just the Zoom attendees, notice the number on the screen, 239-398-8440. And with that, we'll just open it up for questions. Do we have any that have been texted in or questions that were sent to us beforehand? Or what about from the floor, questions from the floor? Okay, well, I have a question. When's the bar open?
Now.
Now? Now? Okay, well, I hope you'll give us some slack on the problems we've had technically and the situation here. I'm not sure I understand exactly myself how this has affected the Zoom audience.
Yeah, Bob's going to talk a little bit.
Oh, okay, a second.
All right. So believe it or not, we tested this before the meeting, things were working perfect. Murphy's Law, we had some challenges, so we're not sure what people on Zoom heard, what they didn't hear, but we did capture all the video of the meeting, so we're going to post that online. We are going to do a Q and A, so if people watch the video, we're also going to email out the presentation, the PowerPoint. So in the coming days, if you have questions, submit those questions to us, we'll give you a reply to email address, and then we'll do a formal written Q and A to any questions that the members have. That's the best we can do. We're embarrassed, to say the least. I'm not the best at technology, and I know these folks did the Corry Community Association Zoom meeting here just, what, three weeks ago with no issues, so go figure, we had the issue tonight. But we'll do the best we can to get the information out to everybody and get everybody's questions answered, and you can always come see me in the office at the club, call me on the phone, send me an email, and we'll reply, usually within 24 to 48 hours. Any questions?
Bob, there's about 10 people online if you want to ask.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Yes.
One thing that I noticed on the golf course, as I view as an improvement, was every sprayer head now has a distance to the middle of the green on it. I think that is hugely beneficial.
Yes. That's been on Pat's project list for...
That's Pat Keenan's line.
So we were fortunate to be able to get that done. You know, the golf staff, we didn't talk a lot about, but they were very instrumental in a lot of the projects, helping get those markers out, get them measured. So kudos to the professional golf staff, they stayed plenty busy over the summer months. Any questions? Chris, are you ready?
Bring it on.
All right, meeting adjourned.